7:01, I'm gonna call the Dunbar Board Selecting Board to order for Thursday, November 29th. Time 7:01, all three selectmen are present, town administrators present, the corner secretary is present, and the recording for the benefit of the public is Mr. Leo Martell. Thank you, Leo. Okay, we have minutes for last week's, two weeks' meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes from the regular November 15th meeting.
I'll second both motions. Any discussion, gentlemen?
No, I just want to say they were a great job. Mike didn't even have a change he could find.
And I did work on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment now. My minister, Mike here on the agenda. You're on the agenda. Okay, Leo.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Close public comment and bring it back to the table. Lee, do you have receipt of the $150?
I do.
You need to make a motion, Bob.
What's that? Yeah.
I'll make a motion for RSA 31:95-B, Roman 3, Paragraph B, to accept a donation, the amount of $150 for Race Across Dunbarton from the local residents.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the donation? Have no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, money so transferred. Okay, next on the agenda, Mike, you're up. I did receive, I saw an email that was sent by your, Jane, yes. Concerned about that, and I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. I would like to know what time the plow trucks were called down on either the 15th or 16th of November.
Okay. I don't have that information from, I just saw that email today, I read that email today. I think is, what I intend to do is listen to what you have to say tonight and take it for, let me look at it, investigate it, talk to appropriate people. And I'd like to get back to you either in person next week for the record, or by email, whatever's convenient for you. But I think is right now, at this point, you asked a couple of questions and brought some, some things to light that need improvement. I'll be example, I'll be one example. I asked Lee and they say, what is our policy concerning the contractors and all that, about, and what role is getting prioritized? We do have a policy, which I'm gonna give you a copy tonight.
I just gave him one.
The thing is, my thing is, when it brought to the road agent's attention today, he said, that needs to be updated. I said, so be it, we need to work on that then. So that was uncovering some, some room for improvement. So I found that right off. But I cannot answer all your inquiries at this point. So the thing is, I like to document some of your questions and so we can address them in a knowledgeable manner.
Okay. Because Kelsey Road didn't get plowed until 11.
Noon time, it was noon time. It was, it was on the email, noon to, by noon time was done.
Yeah, noon time. And I had been out shoveling snow.
And helping her get unstuck, I heard.
Yeah. Actually, I had to shovel up, up the road.
To get to her?
Uh, well, no, to get the car, get the car to move forward, then had to shovel, well, once you got stuck, had to shovel backwards about 15, 20 feet, back to cover up so we could get some traction. Shovel 15 or 20 feet ahead of that, so we'd get a run. And then the car got stuck again, so I had to repeat that procedure, so that's...
It was an unfortunate one.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, the road, noon time. And plowed, the town plow truck showed up at 12:30.
Okay.
So, Mr. Knoll there, I hope he didn't charge you for his services for that storm, for that storm, 'cause I don't believe he earned his money.
Okay.
And I ended up, because the plow trucks hadn't showed up, and like I said, I started shoveling at 5:00 in the morning, and I stayed out shoveling until noon time, except for a couple of half-hour breaks. So I spent six hours shoveling snow. And, you know, I had to shovel out my stuff. And I shoveled out the turnaround in front of the barn. I shoveled out the disputed area of Kelsey Road, all 125 feet of it, up to a width of 16 feet. And, of course, that was about 10:45. Miss Mind was supposed to be coming home from work, and I still hadn't seen the town plow, so I started shoveling up the road.
So she, she, okay.
So I'd made it, I'd made it about two-thirds of the way up the hill, shoveling. At that point, I was only shoveling about an eight-foot path, path, you know, left by...
To two wheels.
Uh, yeah, in between the wheels. Like I said, about two-thirds of the way up the hill. And that's kind of the 100 feet, 200, 300 feet. And that's when I saw Mr. Knoll drive by with his plow truck, he'd finally gotten up. You see, my concerns were, I, I came to the board last year about the lack of services...
To do his issues with the, especially with the snowbank.
Right. Of course, at that time, I was unaware of the theft of my property by Mr. Knoll, Jeff Crosby, which I think cast a whole different light on the last year's situation, and it certainly cast a different light on this year's situation.
I like to think not, but I hear ya. And the thing is, I understand it's stolen, you're still pursuing averages, I respect that.
Right. And I don't think I should be treated like some kind of second-class citizen, just because a couple of elected officials sit in the field and be the king and prince of Dunbar, and I'm a serf, and I just, you know...
That's why I don't wanna just give you clip service. I wanna look into it and get back on it. So I do have the email. I hear you loud and clear. And I'm gonna ask, gentlemen, do you have any other comments?
No, I just saw this, the email that, is it Jane Martin?
Yeah.
That, I just saw it when I walked in the office tonight. So, you know, I, I didn't even know what was going on here.
Okay. Well, I'll also send out some of the pictures that I took that day.
Perfect, that'll help.
Mike, I can give a little insight to the situation if you want, which might give you a little bit of, a little background. This year, I had talked with Jeff several weeks back about not plowing Kelsey Road.
Okay.
And he said he'd really like me to plow Kelsey Road, 'cause they don't really have anybody to set down there early enough to get it done. And I said, well, I'll think about it. And we never did talk again. I assumed he was plowing Kelsey Road. After, I didn't love plow Kelsey Road. And I only plowed it later in the day, when I saw that Mike was out there shoveling, 'cause I had gone and got coffee before with my red vehicle. And I came back, and Mike was still shoveling, so I went out there and plowed it afterwards. But I thought Jeff was plowing it, Jeff probably thought I was plowing it, there's a little miscommunication there. Now, the next storm that happened, no dirt roads in Dunbar were plowed, but I plowed Kelsey Road twice that day to make sure that they didn't have any situations. I did it at the beginning of the storm when there was three inches, and when it finished at about six inches, I did it again. And this last storm, that we just had, after it saw, looked up, you know, the surface got a little higher, 'cause these roads are all muddy, these dirt roads. I went out and plowed this road back again, so...
Well, I hope, I hope we have a good winter, and this is 'cause it gets behind us, and we look at this in the rearview mirror, but, again, let me get some facts. Here's Dave, I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, let me just finish up though. Since then, Jeff and I had talked, and there's a couple of our subcontractors that Jeff is having to do their areas right now. And so he's been on the other end of town doing that, and I told him, until those other subcontractors get up and running and can take care of it, I will help them out with Kelsey Road and take care of it. Whether it takes a month or two months, or whatever it takes, I told Jeff I would help them out. So, that's where it's, that's where it's at now. Jeff and I hadn't talked, and he thought I was doing, I thought he was doing it. And when I saw Mike out there shoveling, that's when I went out there, opened the road up. And the town truck showed up shortly after. I only went out one way and the town truck came.
Okay, well, that explains partially, I mean, yeah. So, I'm gonna leave it open, I, I'm glad, thank you for chiming in on that. Roy just came in, but I don't wanna, he's here for a different reason, but I wanna at least bring it to his attention and let me do some investigating on it, Mike.
Okay.
And I like to look at this, hopefully it's a rearview mirror action, where we don't have to, you know, revisit continually, it's not an issue. 'Cause I think is, I, I like to think it wasn't, I like to think it was intentional, so I'm taking a higher view of this. And, but the thing is, I'm not on the receiving end, and I mean, that's where you are, and so...
Well, unfortunately, from my view, Mike, I see it as intentional.
I, I...
And I see it as recurring.
But I, I don't want it to be, so the thing is, if it is, we're gonna, we're gonna have to nip it early. And the thing is, I think that's what you're trying to do, nip it early, so it doesn't happen for the rest of the winter.
Yes. I prefer not to have, at 63 years old, shoveling that, at length of a driveway and road...
The ticker can go out quickly.
Yeah. I'm wondering who'd be liable if I end up falling face-first into a snowbank with massive heart attack, 'cause I have to do this stuff, 'cause I feel obligated to my girlfriend, and she can drive back down the hill.
And get up there at the end return.
Yeah.
Okay. I hear ya. And the thing is, we'll address it further, and maybe when the road agent comes up later and it's, well, I'll hit him up with it. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna ambush him now. I don't think it's fair to him. Okay?
Okay.
So we'll leave it as an open-ended item, and the thing is, either I'll get back to you by email, or you can arrive next week and we give you a...
I'll come in next week.
Fair enough.
I'll send, I'll send these pictures out.
At the same time, that'd be fine. And the thing is, but the thing is, I look at one thing. We did uncover a policy that needs to probably be reviewed. That was a, I look at it, no, last half full. We found something that needs being proved, so we can do that.
Okay.
Okay? And so you gotta copy the thing that we were gonna look at and approve of. So that's, that's, that's a positive thing coming across that would like benefit the whole town.
Can I just speak on his email? So, you wrote a couple of emails, and I didn't really read it thoroughly, so there's a couple of things that you're asking for on it. If you'd like, I can respond in email, so you have it in writing. But as far as the winter maintenance contractors, what, can I just have a copy of that email? No, just his email.
Yeah, these are the contracts, 'cause I don't know the duties and responsibilities.
Right. The only thing that we have on file, it's, it's in the rest file. The only thing we have related to contractors is the hourly, approved hourly rate of pay. We don't have a contract per se. We were required by our insurance to request a certificate of insurance, and they typically, depending on the type of vehicle, would have a CDL license. So other than that, I don't have anything, so I can put that in writing on that email, so you have it. And then the policy you have there. I think that's a little bit important.
Keep it together, please.
Signed contracts, what all, so we don't have signed contracts. The selectmen approve their hourly rate based on what the information road agent says is a fair hourly rate, then he's, depending on the type of vehicle that they provide for the town. And that policy there explains the start times and responsibilities, but there really isn't anything cut in stone as far as, um...
But what was, what was uncovered that the policy actually needs probably to be really looked at and tweaked a little bit? That's, that's what I'm saying, is a win, that we can improve upon.
Okay.
You know, I, I wasn't, I didn't read that policy before, and now it exists, I saw it, and I mean, it's, the road agent even commented back to Lee today, saying, yeah, there's room for improvement there.
Well, I'm just thinking, if I was a road agent and you, and Lee were my plow drivers, I'd give you a call at whatever time.
Oh, yeah.
You get a certain amount of time to answer the call.
Exactly. And the thing is, I heard, I also heard, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speculate, I'm hearing bits and pieces, I wanna have, I'll talk to him separately and get everything at one point. But I'm hearing bits and pieces of what went on that day. And it's not fair to anyone to look to, to chime in on bits and pieces. Okay?
No, sure.
Okay. So we'll leave it at that. So next week, I'll expect you, I'll put you on the agenda for next week, we'll talk about it again.
Okay. And another thing that I noticed, I spell my name G-U-I-N-E-Y. And now on, when it appears in minutes...
Yes.
I would like my name spelled correctly.
Okay. I think I got it right here on the agenda, and if, if we've misspelled it, I apologize.
Absolutely. So noted, and it will be taken, that will be, that's a, that's an open, that's, I call that a no-grant, it's gotta be fixed.
Okay. No, it's, it's in the minutes, Lee, that's where I keep seeing it.
Oh, okay.
We'll put it, we'll put a thumbs up and make that happen.
Okay.
Where were you correcting those things?
They look at me to correct everything, what can I say? Mike looked at it, must be okay. So they're looking at me, like, I'm the, I'm the fall guy here.
Well, you've been doing it every week, so...
She's got it now, she'll have it right.
Okay. So be it, it will be, it will be addressed, and it will be, from here on forward, for every time you see it wrong, you got a cup of coffee from me, how's that?
Is it fair enough?
You don't drink coffee?
No, I said fair enough.
Okay. Okay. Now, don't make it wrong on purpose.
I was gonna suggest that.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
Nope.
Okay. With that, we'll move on. All right. Sorry, come on up. All right, stay corrected. Oh, wait, that's fine, okay.
We can do it either way, I...
No, you're next.
You have something you gotta do now, it's okay.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
My turn in the barrel?
Uh, this is your budget, you know.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Hey, I can talk about parking. I had, I could find a place last night, sorry, tonight, it was very easy.
Okay, the thing is...
Before we had the night of your meeting?
We were at the great light.
Great light.
A great light.
A great light.
But it was all good. And the thing is, I, I think is, just for the record, we're, we're making reference to the planning board meeting, and we had some concerns, and we had continuous concerns this morning, which I got wind of, and the thing is, it was all constructive, positive constructive stuff. So, thank you for doing that.
It's all doable.
Yes. Okay, this is concerning one of the applications for the, for the planning board, I'll leave it at that. Okay, but we're here to talk about your budget first.
Yes. You got the numbers from Lee, I take it?
Yes.
My understanding was level funded, so I plugged that $570,000 and I'll go back in. First guy in, he kept it level, there we go. Oh, thanks, I didn't, I didn't...
Well, it's level services.
Level services. But that's basically what it is. We've talked about this at great light, we moved a few numbers around. There's one, um, maintenance, we lowered that considerably. And I'll get on to why I lowered that considerably, and I bet it'll become a little clearer. You know, like diesel fuel, put it up $2,000, because we budgeted $10,000 last year, we're at $9,600 now, we're probably gonna go over that. The price of diesel fuel fluctuates. We had been running it kinda high for a number of years, 'cause the prices go up, so we dropped it down, so that, you know, that's, that's where you saw something there. We moved some of Pete's wages around a little bit, 'cause anticipating him getting a raise, also the overtime, again, that's kind of a guess, we don't know what we're gonna get, but typically, it seems like...
That includes the 2% Jeff, in there?
Yes, I, I believe so, rightly.
Well, the 2% is in the salary, he's got a flat item for the overtime, assuming that he can cover it.
No, overtime went up a little bit.
It did, but it's flat. It's easy for him to calculate around numbers.
Yeah, but the 48, 942 includes the 2%.
That's correct, I figured that for him.
In the past, we never used to separate overtime out, and somewhere along the line, we all...
I think it's for the Hampshire retirement, they need to identify.
Yeah, whatever, so, we carry, I mean, budget-wise, we always separate it out for the recording part of it, but budget-wise, we put a number, I think it went wrong, the line was, this selectman, he was kinda stickler about that. And again, it's kind of a crapshoot, because nights and weekends and holidays seem to be when it isn't. And we never know what the length of storm's gonna be and stuff. And that's predominantly where Pete's overtime comes from. Occasionally, there's some other storms or extenuating circumstances.
Thing is, when a tree, just to, help me out here, when a tree goes off the road, walks the road, do you work with the fire department to get back to it?
Yeah, actually, the fire department really leads the charge on that most of the time for us. They, they'll, they respond to the calls, a lot of times, they'll cut them and get them out of the road. Occasionally, if it's a, we'll go back and clean the mess up.
Okay.
You know? Sometimes it involves a piece of equipment, other times, it's just handwork or whatever.
The rental's only $6,000, Jeff, you don't, with all the sweeper and all that stuff?
Yeah, that's, not, when a rule or rental and all that, that's typically what it is. And I mean, yeah, no, but I mean, again, it's not an exact number, if we run into something we have to rent, we don't say, well, we're over.
You just use it on the...
Yeah, we don't say, well, we went over the rental, so it's tool that we need. But that's, the, the tree cleanup, actually, we have a tree-cutting deadline for actually taking down trees.
That's in the summer, though, isn't it?
Yeah, well, in the summer and this time of the year. In the past, a lot of times, this time of year, we would do it, because we'd be coming to the end of our budget season, and a lot of our costs have lined up, and that's kind of a variable. You can take some trees down, if the weather turns like it has now, you can stop doing that. You know, 'cause we always, you know, we gotta take care of the snow, and this year, we've been hit quite hard, early.
Well, it sure got...
Which is unusual. So we have to leave money for our snow budget, but then, if we don't get any snow, we have some plus some.
Yeah. Can I ask you, Jeff, if you're gonna try and do a warrant article like we've been doing on one of the roads in town?
Yep, yep, I'll get to that. So I mean, that's where we are with the budget, I mean...
Talk about maintenance for a minute, how you... What you said you went grossed out?
Yep. I'm gonna ask for a new truck this year.
Okay.
And I'll explain that when we get to it. So obviously, the maintenance line would go down, because we have a 2015 board that's in reasonable, I mean, we have...
You plan on trading it, Jeff?
Uh, I don't know, that's a discussion we're gonna have to come up with, on what to do with it.
Or keep it for backup, or...
Exactly. I, I wanna enter all those discussions. You know, I don't know how much you wanna talk about tonight, we can brush upon it when we get to it. If you wanna finish this first...
Go ahead, I'll just continue with your presentation.
So I mean, everything's about the same. Unfortunately, this year, I got one, some bad news about striping the roads. Our anticipation was to put road striping on. Due to the weather and the circumstances, the rain and all that, the guys that do the striping were just behind. I got a call from them this week, they wanna know if we still wanna strip the roads. And I told them, it was too late. We, it's hard enough to get the paint to stick in good conditions, and by using the sand-salt mixes, I grit on the roads, so the road isn't clean, and I just don't think it would here. Well, so they got us on the list to do it in the spring this next year, but, then, you know, 'cause you can't do it when it's raining and all that, and they just, it was, they got behind and they never could get caught up. So that's not gonna happen, obviously.
Does your contract sometime encumber it?
Well, we, yeah, we can possibly, we'll see where we are. That would only take a matter of a couple, three days to do that, when we get a little closer to the end.
Is that, so that the board would be...
This is only the first...
He's got the money there?
This is only the first, we still got the whole month of December to go. We've filed three substantial snowstorms already, since the 16th of October, uh, November. So...
Does this reflect the, the winters, winter contractors, reflect the current to date with these storms?
I don't know.
I don't believe so.
No, there's probably, the bills all come in at different times.
Okay, so is, that's gonna, that's up a little bit for last, for this year. Okay.
Yeah, there could be more, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There could be more. I did, what I did is, I shifted an extra $5,000 today, because we picked up a couple new roads.
Exactly.
And I just, that, that number's been quite accurate over the last few years, but I thought, having brought on some new roads that we just bumped out $5,000, just to make, try to keep it a little realistic.
Okay. Gentlemen, any more questions on the operating budget?
No, that's good.
I mean, it's, it was just kinda moving the numbers around, just to try to...
You know, I don't see any, any money for the bridge.
Yeah, isn't that good, huh?
I know.
Well, that's kind of a relief to get that behind us.
You are gonna pay that, though, that's a little bit paid.
Yeah, we did not pay it this year. We were lucky to get the school parking lot done.
Yeah.
That was priority, and we were still thinking, well, if the weather held, we'd do the bridge, but we just, he couldn't do it that day. And I think now, we've got some frost in the ground and everything.
It's too late, it's too late in the year.
Yeah. Paying plans to schedule the closure, 14th of December as it is, and they have enough work to do to just get caught up.
With the weather as it is, how are you doing with this year's budget?
Oh, I was referring to that. He's got a little bit more than that, 'cause some of the payments coming in, so he's still under budget for the very end of the year.
Yeah, but we, we have, overall, budget-wise, we have enough money there.
Oh, yeah.
If we go over on snow plowing allowance...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not...
Not hurting for money?
No, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
But again, we got a month more to go.
All right. Just to let you know about, speaking of storms, I'm gonna have Lee just talk to you about some of the questions that were asked about Mike, I came in late afterwards.
Yeah.
Just, I wanna get some facts. Dave, Dave put some great light on it tonight, and Lee's gonna take that information with your information and prepare a response for Mike. So I need you to meet with her afterwards.
The only I've got to say about that is, given the type of weather we've had this winter, maintaining, plowing our gravel roads has been a challenge this year.
And the business office, I mean...
Yeah, we've tried all different types of things, plowing, not plowing, it's just, it's been a challenge. And a mess right now, but...
But I think she'll get some details from you, we don't have to do it right now, but I thought Dave added some great information.
Well, I just shed the light that, you know, I thought you were doing, you thought I was doing it, so we had that miscommunication, and when I saw him out there shoveling, I went out there and made a pass, and then the town truck came right after, so...
To me, I look at that as a, as a human thing, human error, not error, but a human factor, not necessarily a intentional thing.
Yeah, I, I gotta say, I mean, it's, if the storms would come between 9:00 at night and 3:00 in the morning, it would be fine.
Amen.
But every, every time, they change, so scenarios change every time.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just wanna get, she'll get some facts from you, so we can prepare a response, okay?
I just remember last year, where I was in here at least four different times for complaints.
Well, that's why I don't...
And I don't wanna do that every big...
That's exactly where I wanna go. That's exactly where I wanna go, I wanna address them early and just, I don't think we need to do the, do it in this meeting, right?
That's fine.
Okay.
Jeff, the other thing too is I wanna make sure you mention that these last two storms, they, the town didn't plow any of the dirt roads.
Yeah, not until the very end.
But Kelsey Road was plowed.
Well, even, even my neighbors got a driveway, they had a tough time getting, they, they plowed a driveway, they wanted to do the dirt road.
So anyway.
It's chomping in and digging all the time.
Because it, once it freezes, we live with that for the winter. Anyway, it just, it's been a challenge for everybody and.
Okay. So do you think you'll give Rainey a break on town meeting day?
I'll try, I'll do the best I can. I think he wants it on the right day, don't you?
No. You're gonna address capital improvement now?
One hour.
One hour, yes. The first one hour was, it's time to replace our number one international truck.
Okay.
Well, the bigger one. Large one.
The six wheeler.
The six wheeler, the everyday plow truck, whatever the town relies on. It's a nineteen ninety-nine, we've talked about it in the past. So next year, it'll be technically year manufacturer was nineteen ninety-nine. So it's twenty years old. And that's quite a while. It's gotten quite rusty, it still runs and it, it is defendable. It stays on top of any of the little stuff that happens to it to, you know, make sure it's, it's ready to go. But it's, it's getting quirky. The biggest problem we have with it is the dump body itself is pretty well rusted out, the subframe on it and all that is. We used it all summer, we kept an eye on it and it could be patched. I'd like to start the process and, and go to the town meeting and ask for the money. Right now, we have a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars according to the number I got from Lean, that's just a quick number, it's actually.
It's the money you've been asking to be here.
Yeah, because it's in our capital reserve fund. I would like to ask for another twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Twenty-five thousand dollars this year, just like we have been.
On a separate warrant article or?
We've been, every year in the last number of years, we've been asking for twenty-five thousand dollars under a warrant article for capital reserve.
Right.
But then, the, the other caveat of it is, take that with the hundred and thirty-six to buy the new truck. I've got, I've got some preliminary estimates. And this, again, this is just preliminary, not really sitting down to give some sort of, uh, direction. It looks like it could be around a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So you're within a couple thousand.
So we're, we're close, we gotta, if we get twenty-five this year from a warrant article, from a hundred and thirty-six, we're at a hundred and sixty-one.
Correct.
So I would propose, if I will have a better handle on it as time gets closer to the meeting and we gotta have a, a, a most accurate number I will have.
Okay.
But.
Preliminary numbers are, are that close to that?
Yes. I've been following it for a while, because this, this was our overall plan and I.
So that's the whole purpose of the capital reserve?
Yeah, and it was trying to align it with it and we knew we'd be close. The only thing that I did here and I haven't verified it, even if we were to purchase a truck in the spring, we still might not get it before the end of next year.
Because of the.
We, yeah, the, the manufacturers and stuff that, for whatever reason.
Which is already happening to us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we were experiencing that, we're, you know, with the, the trash. So that, that's a possibility, so I mean, we should start the process at this town meeting.
Jeff, can I give you a little insight on finding out with my company?
Yep.
That I work with.
Yep.
All the new trucks that we've purchased, you know, they have the new emissions.
Yes.
All our old trucks are up and running every day, our new trucks.
Oh, no.
Every other week are at the dealership for the new emissions and they shut the truck down.
Well, I know exactly how it is.
So, um, in light of, in light of trading in the other truck, I think we may wanna, until we get the bugs worked out of these newer trucks, I think we may wanna keep it for a backup.
I agree totally with you, Dave, I was gonna touch on that.
You know, we have brand new, all different companies too.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference.
We have internationals, they're all down and they're down for week, weeks upon end, you know?
Everything is very technically computer operated now and if there's a malfunction, it shuts the system down. And you can't override it, I mean, all the old trucks, I mean, everything was mechanical and if you had a little ingenuity, you could bypass something and get it back to the garage or whatever. And it's true, it's unfortunate, but that's, they're all that way.
And our trucks are double, double as amount of money, you know, they're expensive trucks, yeah, they're larger trucks.
So it doesn't make any difference, so Dave is correct in that assumption. The truck we have now, I don't know exactly what trade-in value would be or if we sold it, but it, it probably wouldn't be any more than fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. And that's what I was thinking, we could use it for a good backup in case. And also, I mean, we, we may need backups for other reasons or, you know, because it, it does still run, it is usable, it's not that we can't use it, but it's gonna need a little more care and if it's a park more and rest more than the garage, it'll last a little bit longer. So we'll have to discuss that, what we wanna do with it.
Uh, just, you asked twenty-five K, if you're short several thousand, would it be worthwhile to make the warrant for thirty K to cover the cost of that?
Well, I think, we don't need to, yeah, we don't need to have the warrant article number today, do we?
We need it when we're gonna have the warrant done.
Yeah, but that isn't until after January, right? Another month.
Right, early January, I need to get my.
Yeah, so I, I can.
I was kinda leaning like Mike said, if we might jump that capital limit to thirty, maybe have five left to even repair the subframe of the other truck.
Or, or just put it in capital reserve, whatever we don't spend, leave in the capital reserve. No, I agree with that, but I was gonna say either that or we just absorb it out of the budget.
Right, but the thing is, your, your operating budget is one thing, capital reserve is another, and I don't wanna change your budget either.
We're close enough for our discussion, it's not like it's, this should be a surprise and it's gonna be twenty-five thousand more. I mean, I'll have more refined numbers.
Okay.
I mean, this is much better than coming, you know, ask for, you know, a hundred grand for a truck from.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, no, I, I feel it's a pretty, it's gonna work out quite well.
Okay, and gentlemen, any more questions for?
That, that's the, that's the capital reserve and purchasing the truck.
I'm sorry, I have more.
A, now B is, I'd like to ask for the hundred thousand dollar warrant article again for paving. Um, we, actually, I believe, Lean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had a hundred thousand dollars last year and we actually earmarked it for Greatvine Road and I think when all the bills came in, we're at ninety-some odd thousand, so.
That was perfect.
So there's a little surplus there, unfortunately.
But unfortunately.
She said I can't spend it anywhere else.
It specified one road, so unfortunately, maybe we learned from this that our future warrants specify paving projects.
Oh, whatever, but anyway, the next major project as far as grinding up and reclaiming, I'd like to put on the books is railroad. Because it's in, in quite rough shape. It needs some work, similar type of work, it's approximately a mile long. We would do it all in one year with that.
Hope the bridge there is gonna get more paid, more, more profit.
It gets a lot more traffic already and people commented that it really happened. And it does, we can tell already.
When was the last time it was paved?
Um, a section of it was rebuilt when Simon Adet was the road agent, I'm talking early nineties and that was just a small section.
Okay.
It was, and it, it needs some shoulder work and, and all that and it's, it needs to be ground up and then in the meantime, we have to resurface our school parking lot, we just put the base coat on for this year.
Right.
Because it was so late and we let it settle and see if there's any issues, we're gonna put the top coat on that.
Would that come out of the hundred K too?
Would that come out of the hundred K?
It could, but.
It could. No, I.
You might be able to do that.
Yeah, we'd just take it out, we mean, if we labeled it paving, we could split it up any way we want, but all of that could go to railroad without a problem. And it would take more.
Jeff, I know this isn't your road budget here or your that portion that you normally do in the spring, but we talked to some of the people down on Montalona Road about some maintenance on a section of that.
Yeah, no, I wanna get over there too next year and start upgrading colors, because that would be the game plan. Ray Road would be the last major project over in this part of town, other than we have some resurfacing to do, not any real digging up and doing anything. And gravitate this year toward Montalona Road, start changing some culverts, do a little drainage in preparation to move the whole operation over there.
Okay.
You know, as far as.
Just so I know, in case they start asking about.
So I mean, if you, you kinda look at this, we're gonna have, yeah, that inside of town, Greatvine, that area is all gonna be in really quite nice shape. We do railroad and then we have to do some overlay on Clifford Farms, Olaf in a Road, all four, but they don't need major work, they just need some shimmy and some overlay. So we could start working our way out of there and that whole section is done and the last big section is gonna be over here Montalona and Twist Hill, which are, are very busy roads.
Okay.
And they need quite a bit of work, Montalona the worst.
Okay.
So that's what I'd like to do with my budget. Pretty much parallel in what we've been doing the last few years.
And I, I, I'm.
And I'm, I'd be, I think that would be great if you, you, you're the guys dealing with the budget, if we could ask for the thirty thousand for a little buffer. You know, I'll have some better numbers, because it will cut it close on the twenty-five.
And the thing is, why hamstring your operating budget?
Yeah. But I, I didn't know how much you wanted to ask for.
Well, you've been asking twenty-five K per year and I think is if this is the year you pull the trigger, you won't have enough in the capital reserve.
And I really feel we should, I don't think, if we could put it off another year, I would, but I think we're, we're just.
Okay. I'd like to maybe talk to you offline, um, about another potential solution, uh, that would give you a newer truck too. I'll talk to you offline on that.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Just to take it out of the box.
The, like I said, Dave hit the nail on the head. That's what everybody's saying about these trucks and they're just, it's a.
The potential maintenance, uh, shutdowns.
Well, it's, it's not a cost to you, but you lose the truck for several weeks at a time while they're trying to figure it out.
But that's the unfortunate part, you can't do it in your shop anymore, it's all dealer orientated stuff.
Like if it happens during the winter, lots with Jeff, where that truck has a route to do, it's, it'd be a nightmare for him, so.
And the other thing is not, I mean, it's unfortunate, the belt rates is having a problem, but they've got a lot of trucks on the road. So I think you gotta look at that, it's a percentage. And there's a lot of towns that buy new ones and they're having pretty good luck. The, there was a really bad time a few years ago when it really first came out and I don't think everybody understood the ramifications. But they've got a handle on some of that now, so the word I've been gotten, overall, it's better, but it, it's still, when it goes down, it goes down, you know?
Can I move on to another subject?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, budget, I think, any more budget questions, if you're ready, move on.
Okay.
Budget thumbs up, good presentation, okay. Second thing was, um, you had an opportunity to meet with, um, uh, DOT referencing the software program to track condition of New Hampshire roads.
Yeah, I did, I met with Dean Williams.
Could you elaborate on this, what, what?
Yeah, basically what it is, it's a program through central regional planning and UNH. And they, it was a pilot program and we got a previous selectman signed us up for it. So we ended up having to go with it. And Dean had calculated some stuff and they had done a part of the research, wanted to meet with me and went over some stuff. And he's got more to do, it got behind right out of the gate because they had software glitches in it and all this other stuff. So it's been kind of a test case and they've got, most of the bugs worked out. What they did is they did an actual drive around surface, it's all road surface, just the surface of the road, nothing to do with any drainage or anything else, just the pavement surfaces and pavement, pavement options for maintenance.
Okay.
And there's a spreadsheet that goes with that, it tells you if you do a unoil or a crack seal or an overlay or a reclaim, what, well, all the per cost per foot. And he's gonna come back with an inventory of our roads, which is pretty much, we know what they are. I mean, I didn't have a Bible with it all written down, but this is gonna be a software program.
So you have to be a computer skilled?
Well, no, I mean, it, it's just, it's not any hidden information. I mean, I, I think any of you guys could take a ride around these roads and pretty come up with the same assessment.
Okay.
It's, it's not rocket science. It was funded through the state, the initial survey of the roads and all that was paid for by the state.
So our roads were surveyed then?
Well, that, that drive around survey.
Yes.
Not survey.
On their, okay, I understand.
Yeah, what I mean, just.
See what's out, it was visual.
A visual ride around with the UNH people, extension piece. Now, they paid for that, but they're not paying anymore.
Okay.
So they're gonna have the program initiated, so you'll have a benchmark.
Yeah.
But if, the way it was explained to me by Dean, and this isn't, this could change as well, don't get me wrong, there could be grant money or something else that comes along for it. But right now, it would be if the town of Dunbar wanted to say, all right, this is our benchmark for, and it's already old, two thousand seventeen.
Sure.
It's gonna be two thousand nineteen next year, so it's already two years.
Greatvine is not gonna be listed as an improved road?
Yeah, they got it as a dirt road. So I mean, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
We, those are mighty housekeeping. But what I'm getting at is, so we have a benchmark there and if we wanna have someone come back around and update it, they'll have to do a drive around survey again, but we would be picking up the tab on that stuff.
Okay, I guess the question is, I'm gonna rely upon you.
Yep.
Whether, um, you think it's value added to the town.
I told Dean, he asked if we wanted to keep going with it and I said, you've gone this far, finalize the program materials, give it all to us and we'll look at it again and make a decision.
That's.
And he was a hundred percent on it, he thought that was a wise decision and, uh.
Sounds like a plan.
They're getting paid to a, a fund other than the town of Dunbar to do this.
Okay.
So gonna get it, and it's still at this point, it is a pilot program.
So that's a.
And it was supposed to parallel what the state does with a ten-year plan.
Okay.
So it, that's what the state's trying to do to, they're trying to get the towns, everybody on board, in the same philosophy they have and basically they fund, have a ten-year plan and every two years they do the funding and if they don't meet the funding for the two-year plan, that two-year plan becomes a problem. They bump everything else, so it, it's just, it's documents, it would help our argument if we went before town meeting and said, hey, listen, we wanna get a bond. We could lay everything out in spreadsheets and say, this is what's gonna happen if we don't do this. In five years, this road is like this.
Could deteriorate to a.
It's gonna deteriorate and it, it gets back to the old adage that the road agents have been using for years. You gotta take care of your good roads or they will become bad roads, so that, that's the end of the.
Okay, thank you for, just stay on topic, keep us up on one of this.
It was very informative to talk to them.
Okay, that's who you were trying to volunteer for me last night, correct?
Yeah, there's a.
Indirectly.
Yeah, there's a program that you can go to.
Okay.
And it's a an update on different things and Donna is gonna be the representative, she would love to do it.
Um, and I'm gonna ask one last thing.
Yep.
Um, in your budget, uh, you probably have it in here buried, but I think it's, um, regarding dirt roads, we were looking at some other products, now you're gonna do some test products that we discussed earlier this year?
Yeah, we'll try, I mean, we'll try something.
Okay.
My understanding is the, uh, there may be some regulations coming down the line on that.
Regarding, which you can.
Dust control.
Dust control, okay.
So the, yes.
We, there was a lot of, a lot of concern with, that people lived on the class, uh, five roads with dirt roads.
Yep.
And I thought, eh, we could do a test case on one, maybe pick one road that you're, which you think is the most problematic one and try the new product.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, and I'll, I'll leave you your best judgment.
Yeah, I, it's.
Because you, you, when you were in meeting talking about it, there was a lot of, a lot of people were like, uh, showing interest.
Yep.
Okay.
I know what, a lot of the towns are, are using the, the calcium chloride.
Right.
I don't know if that's a wise idea.
No, but there was a new product, I think they, they were just.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, and that.
Ron always seems to be updating on stuff like that.
He lives on a dirt road, right?
Yeah, you know, he does, he actually offers me a lot of information, there was one particular material, gorilla something.
Gorilla smoke.
Yeah, that he was looking into, but as it turned out, we couldn't even get a sample of the material, but that was what we were after, was a sample to dry.
Okay, I just remind you that because there wasn't a public.
But I wanna, I'm not, living on a gravel road is problematic.
It's a choice.
It is, can you snow cover it and icy in the winter? Money in the spring? And dusty in the sun.
Yeah, and as we heard earlier tonight, a surprise can be problematic. Okay, any last questions? Lean from the town minister's interview?
No.
Budget matters.
I think we're good.
Okay, and I'll talk to you offline later on about, uh, taking out of the box, I think I'm not a proposal, I wanna take out of the box.
You put, snow plows on fire trucks?
Don't tell me, don't tell me.
Can you stick around, because I think, um, we have to listen in on, um, the DOT response letter. You might have some interest on that and then, um, we have a member from the public that wants to comment and so I think that might affect your department.
All right. I'll just move. There you go, okay, well, before I go.
I'm gonna bring up.
Go right down.
Okay, so the, I have noted there, review policy on snow removal and ice control, road policy could be.
That's a, that's a work, a work in progress.
We are, um, decided after looking at it earlier that he and I will look at it, go over it, um, modify.
Right, as I. He and I are speaking about Jeff?
Yes, about the snow removal and then come back with the board with the, some recommendation, but that won't happen like immediately.
No, I think it's. Okay, Chris, come on up.
Uh, I confirmed, uh, with Dean Williams that he received our application, so that's being currently reviewed.
At the central regional.
Yes, for the, uh, ten-year plan.
I took your email and I think I announced it at the planning board last night.
Oh, great, okay.
And so, and I gave appropriate, um, recognition of Mike Tardif, who basically was helpful and stimulated us to pursue that.
Sure, great, great.
That was, uh, on the, uh, getting into the, the ten to twelve year plan. And now, the other thing you have now, you have a letter which was drafted, uh, we edited it just a little bit.
Perfect.
And, uh, I thought you captured, um, you captured the public session, we had the public open hearing, was, uh, you captured the, the gist of the meeting.
Excellent.
And, uh, I thought you were spot on, you didn't need any, if he was all by yourself, he did it perfectly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, essentially, I'm gonna, I'm gonna distill it, it's gonna maintain the three-way stop as it is, at a short term, with enhanced warnings and signage, um, that's the basic.
So I've left that public hearing notice on the homepage of the...
Right.
Website, um, would you be up for posting this letter, this response letter to...
Abs- absolutely, I have no problem.
I mean, I think it would be helpful for people to understand and know what we're doing for them, and trying to get this...
And it keeps people, there's nothing, nothing hidden about this, it keeps it visible.
Right.
And so, uh, let's see what the DOT, because obviously, there was some pushback from one of the state reps saying DOT is our sponsor. Well, we're gonna give them the opportunity to do it right, I'm not gonna second guess them ahead of time, I'm gonna give them an opportunity to, to rise to the occasion.
Right.
And help us out.
One thing that was pointed out to me, just so you're aware of it, um, a couple of years, a few years back, um, previous board members, uh, was in favor of dark skies, remember? Les going through the whole town and saying, we don't want streetlights, we want people go to bed at night, I guess, and one of the items that came up during this public discussion was that there were no streetlights or poles there. I was informed by the previous, uh, um, selectmen that if, in fact, the, the street pole is one item that we're heavily for, it would have to be at a cost to the town. I don't know how true that is, to install it, we would be responsible for paying the electric bill.
That was pointed out, too.
That was pointed out, and it said it was less than twenty dollars a month.
Right, right, very, with the LEDs now, they're very efficient, but who would be responsible for that pole, I guess, get that installed? Is it just public service?
Well, they'll, they'll let us know when they go through the cycle.
For example, they, they were gonna offer some sign, or anything, some solar stuff that we, they'd install it, the speed stuff, and we'd have to maintain it thereafter.
Maintain it thereafter, okay.
Do you have any comments, Sue?
No, I think, uh, I appreciate the board's support in the letter, and, um, if you'd like, I can send electronic copies to, uh, DOT, and I wanted to copy in Dean Williams as well, just to have that through the tenure file as well, if that's okay.
Yeah, I can scan it and get it off to you.
Sure, thank you.
So I'm gonna go sign my portion, and we left you, you gotta sign it too, my friend.
Yeah, it was amazing, most of the public was on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was great meeting, very well attended, and...
So I'll scan it off to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
So good work, and we look forward to seeing other things.
Appreciate it.
As we go next, into next year, there are some ordinances.
Yes.
We need to eliminate or tidy up.
That's for next year.
Sure. Okay, there was a, you said there was a gentleman wanting to comment about this?
Well, no, um, Nate Naris called earlier, said that, asked about whether we were having a board meeting, and he did say that we were here, and he said he would be interested in attending and maybe talking to you guys.
We have not...
Do a, do a...
We have public comment, yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna skip town business and go right on top of it. So, public comment is where, um, you as a, as a resident town can basically sound off with a recommendation, uh, complaint, whatever, and we listen. We don't always address it perfectly, but we try. So, I'm gonna open, we have two sessions where we open a public comment. And even during the meeting, I'll open, I'll take public comment if it's germane to the subject.
Okay.
So, I'll start with, I'll get a, Leo, do you have anything for the comment this time around?
Also, Nate, would you just like people to state their name and address, just for the record, for the, for the camera more than anything?
I'll continue in the back row, anything else, Jeff?
I'm good, thanks.
Sure, okay, and if you have anything to say, you're welcome to say it now.
My name's Nate Naris, Moore Road.
Okay.
I'm good, I have no public comment.
Okay, well, again, it's just an opportunity where citizens can actually have an opportunity to give us some feedback, uh, criticisms, whatever. It's usually constructive, though, I'll leave it at that. Right now, I'll close.
Just so you know, Nate's one of our flowers in town, that plows our roads and one of the subcontractors.
Thank you for doing the good work you do.
He does, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
He slid us a road there, not too long ago. It's hard work.
Especially if it's a long night, too.
Good to see you safe after that.
I have a closed public comment, bring it back to the board, and I have a large inbox here. Alright, first of all, um, it's, uh, heating season again, and if recall, we went through a lot of stuff last year with selecting the, um, the, the oil supplier, and so Dunbar and Fuel would like to extend their contract for the twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, nineteen heating season. I have, personally, I have no problems with that, I think they, uh, I'm gonna speak positively about the company. I thought they did a great job, a great service to the town when they extracted the oil from the school, from the old tanks, took it back, gave it to the board, and then redistributed at no charge to the rest, remainder of the town. That's an example of their customer service. And, uh, gentlemen, if you wanna chime in, or should we have a consensus?
No, I think you're right, and they also, uh, you know, help when we have maintenance issues on these, um, furnaces that we have in this building and some of the other buildings, I think we're not too...
Okay.
So, well, same thing, you know, whenever there's something has to be done, it's usually, they jump right in, so...
Okay. Can you please cut the contract for this?
Yep, I will pass it on.
Okay. Speaking of heating. Hello? I just, uh, um, library's having some issues with heating, I'll leave it at that, this is no FYI, there's no action required. This Mary will let us know that there are some problems in terms of the building, she's monitoring that now.
Yeah, can I just bring something up with that?
Please.
Since this has been becoming an ongoing problem, I don't know where to blame, whether it's the product of the sensor that's failing, that's not, um, flexible for temperature changes, that type of thing, or if it's something that the board should think about for maintenance for next year, possibly putting in a heating system that would give some heat, like, like what we did here, forced hot air, forced up water, and...
It looks like it's triggering alarm on the second floor.
Yeah.
So she's opening a door on the second floor.
Yeah, the top of the stairs, she'll open the door so that the heat rises, but it seems to be, and then, and then, again, she's also wondering with the photos that she attached, if it's actually a sensor in basement that's faulty, because it's cold and damp in the basement, so...
Yeah, maybe we should have that checked where the, whoever installed the furnace, we will have it checked where the sensors are and where they should be.
Right, so there is no heat upstairs, right now, and I, and so I don't know the answer to that.
Like, there's nothing that should be freezing upstairs either, so...
There's no water going upstairs.
But the sensors are telling this, this monitoring...
Right, so we'll have to see if it's in the basement, because the basement would matter, but the second floor probably shouldn't matter.
Yeah.
Great question.
Although, although before I removed the old stairway, that heat used to travel right upstairs, so it was warm upstairs.
Warmer, yeah.
And when I closed that up, I also insulated that part, and when you close those doors to the foyer, there's no, there's no hot air getting upstairs till she opens the doors, you know, let some in.
Yeah.
But there shouldn't be a sensor up there.
That's what I'm thinking, what, disconnect the sensor, that's upstairs, too easy.
But it may be the one in the basement triggering too, so we should, we should...
Needs a service call, a true service call.
We think that's the...
Yeah, yeah, I think, in fact, I think we should have, uh, Lean call whoever provided that.
It's also security.
No, is that sensor, is that just since break-ins, or that sends fire?
It's a fire, E N, E N, security alarm.
So the thing is, I think...
So it's a security up on the second floor that we...
So...
So she's got trouble in system fault two, and then here, because she'd never seen this message before, it says, freeze, two wire, detect, second floor, zone three, frozen soup.
I...
Why don't you, um, see if you would come in and talk with us about that, out of one of our selectmen?
Okay.
Yeah, do you want to, well, see if it's required to have it up there or not.
What are we protecting upstairs if there's no water to freeze?
I think there was a reason why we had to do that, but I'm not sure if John Wickens the one with the answer to that.
Double check with John Lean, and then send us an email out, and then we'll see if all started to speak.
If it also warns you of a fire, that's a concern I have.
Jeff, go ahead.
I just picked up on something Lean said, about the alarm system and the trouble in comm system two. That's the same exact issue I'm having at the highway garage, and according to the All-Star guys, because it only has one line, and he piggybacked it onto our phone line, so, and I found this out, just when I needed to call the plow guys to come in, that my phone on the wall doesn't work anymore, because it's, that's, he tied into that somehow. So we had talked about this about a month ago, or less.
You authorized a second...
And you authorized me to talk to the, the, uh, the boys next door together, which I have not done yet, but I will do it. And that's what Rick from All-Star indicated, and he indicated that the library had the same problem.
Okay.
Couldn't, yeah, so it is, it could, that could be maybe that part of it.
Have you been getting horses, though?
More now that it's colder. Oh, goes off all the time.
Oh, it does.
I can send...
I have to keep putting silence, every day or so.
At least once a day.
Okay, I can send Dunbar and telephone, uh, the email, just to say, go ahead and install that.
Yeah, I, I just, I worry, I, I, with the snowplow and things, it's a big problem, I just have to take...
I'll just, I'll just send them each...
But I, I was gonna kinda coordinate it, so...
Lean it for the same time.
So I could call him and tell him what they were gonna do, so...
Or do that, or...
I'm saving, I'm gonna...
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, so she wanted to do the library at the same time, and she said, do we wanna try Jeff's to see if it actually works?
Yeah, that's what I do.
One at a time, yeah. Yeah, okay, we'll do Jeff's and then we'll...
Okay.
Uh, get the, we'll try mine, get the bugs worked out, so we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
And if that cures it all, it's not much, it's not much of a discussion.
Then we call them back in here and get them in front of us.
Okay, and then I'll also let Mary know that that's what we're gonna do with the highway, and if it fixes the problems that he's having, we'll do the same thing there, Mary and fix it.
I can say ours goes off a lot, I think.
Okay.
We don't want it to go off so much you don't even look at it.
Well, it's, it's an irritating sign, and all you should do is open the door and push silence a lot. It doesn't clear the code or anything, it just silences the alarm.
Does it call anybody to go do that?
I was under the impression it got a hold of somebody, and then I've been told, and I could be wrong, that the monitoring company realizes this, but they can tell the difference between something important and something not important. And I don't know if that's true, I don't know really much about it.
Cause I'm on that list to call, and I haven't got any calls yet.
But nobody, no one calls and makes sure anything's okay, and obviously, the fire department's unaware of it.
And you wouldn't get...
We haven't got a call there.
Okay.
And I talked to John, John knows what's going on.
Okay.
The fire guru, so, it, it maybe is that signal's up.
Doesn't it get you, it gets me a little bit upset, and I, not emotionally upset, but just upset, disappointed with the contractor who we spent...
Well, yeah, I think this should have really been explained.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we were left a little bit in the dark about that.
Yeah.
I think the cell was the most important part of this, and then, yeah, you gotta do this too, but you don't really have to do it.
But, but we're stuck with all the false alarms.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I don't think any of this is the end of the world, I think it's all solvable.
Yeah, we'll, you be the test case, we'll, we'll hear back on that, and we will start that process going.
I'll do that.
Alright, continuing the mailbox, um, just for the record, I didn't think it took nine months to make a truck, and Chevrolet, I mean, that's why they're outsourcing downsizing the company. I was approved in March, and here it is, uh, December.
But, in their defense, I heard that about these larger trucks.
This is a, this is an F, this is an F two, is it a two fifty?
Yeah, I, I don't know about that, I did, the gentleman I talked to today, this week, about the Sander bodies and all that, so... Hey, you might wanna really get on the stick about warranting that, because I, it could take a year to get delivery on a truck. Their part of it takes about a month to get it, do their part after the delivery.
I think we're, uh, we're in the state spec group, and they probably only run those trucks once or twice a year, so I, I don't know what that is.
But I haven't actually talked to a dealer to get that information.
Uh, we have an update report from the, from the planning zoning department, um, just before the planning department, we have two applications pending, one is for the subdivision, routine subdivision off Monta Long Road, and the second one is a, uh...
CBA granted the eating and drinking establishment.
They, they made their first presentation, and the thing is, they're gonna, they're pending a second presentation, so probably for a, a decision.
It was a good meeting.
Since they granted the special...
This is the zoning board, it's not the planning board now, yeah.
I have to add this to your mailbox, and that pertains to our winter maintenance.
Okay.
And the responses in the front.
This has to be addressed right now?
It will, because Mr. Naris is here.
Okay. Alright, give me the gist of it.
Well, um, unfortunately, with this unknown snowstorms.
Right.
And the hazards of it all, we had a misfortune of having one of our independent contractors have an accident.
And so...
It brought to my attention that the individual did not have a C D L, so rather than, uh, turn a blind eye, I followed up with our property liability insurance.
Yes.
To see if there was any type of exemption that would cover the town for our contractors, and the response that they gave was that he would in fact have to have a C D L license, so I think that's why, um, Nate is here tonight to maybe give his input on it, or...
Nate, you wanna talk about this a little bit? Say, obviously, it looks like the, our insurers are requiring you to have a C D L. They're exempting, they're exempting the fire department, that's all.
Yeah, so, I don't know what information you got from department, from, you said you were gonna call...
Yes, you're correct.
Motor vehicle for, to get their information on it, but the response that I got back from the, um, insurance company was that, it's the fire department?
Fire department.
Is exempt from municipalities, unless they have another type of job that requires that they have a C D L license.
I do know that any town employee gets waived the medical card as well. Anybody that plows or maintains any roads for the town, whether it's the town truck or their own truck, they get waived a medical card. So you can't travel interstate, like in Massachusetts or Vermont or wherever else, but for the state of New Hampshire, that medical card gets waived.
Well, that's kinda correct, but, if you have a C D L license now, you have to have a medical card on file with the state of New Hampshire. If you don't have one on file with the state of New Hampshire, they will revoke your C D L license.
Unless you're exempt.
The only way you're exempt is if you're an employee, not a subcontractor. And I'm talking about medical card, I don't, I don't know, I don't know about the C D L part, I know years ago, there was some stuff. I'm talking about the medical card part of it.
So...
So we don't even need to go there with a medical card.
What's the remedy?
Well, the C D L is on the weight of the vehicle, I don't even know what weight Nate's vehicle is.
I don't know, is it, is it falling to that?
I have, I have a remedy, uh, I'm work, working to get, towards getting a C D L.
Perfect.
So he'll be, he'll be compliant.
Right.
Good, good.
So be compliant.
Time frame?
About, not gonna hold you to it.
You can have it done by the end of?
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Okay. It'll, it'll, it'll be a process, but I'm sure you'll work on it diligently, okay?
It'll start next weekend, see where it goes.
Okay.
Good.
So that'll just bring us into compliance, so the thing is, uh, of course, you know, the problem is, you hurt yourself, you hurt someone else. We wanna make sure you're covered, that's the bottom line.
My, my, my insurance has been great.
Okay, but we wanna make sure that, you know, that it's a town liability here too, and I believe that's where we're going with this.
That's correct, yeah.
I think Nate was giving us some misinformation somewhere along the line, this wasn't an intentional...
No, I don't, and he's doing a good job, and he works well back there.
Exactly, and I think it was a very unfortunate circumstance.
Yeah.
And like I said, he's doing what he can to rectify and get ahead of it, and I think it's, it's a done deal.
Jeff, I'm gonna ask this, when it's done, please inform the board.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Any other sub problem, any supplement, any, any issues with that?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
And, uh, let's, let's lay off the snow a little bit, too.
Well, that would be fine with me. We are, I bet not for a while.
Okay, thank you, Lean.
Alright.
Alright, the last thing, while we just gave you, what was that? Alright, that's okay, that's the, yeah, okay, okay. Alright, we got a, uh, we got Ed White volunteering to be on the, uh...
Would you request that, that came through my office, part of the town forest?
I asked, um, when I was at that town forest, or, I call it, yeah, the, uh, town, can I, town forest meeting? I asked for the service years of Ed White, because Ed White moved out of Dunbar, after being a longtime resident, being on many boards for many, many years, and, um, they're actually still looking for somebody with some similar, um, tree service background work for the town forest committee now.
Well, actually, we've got somebody.
Oh, you do?
Brian Kamol.
Oh, okay.
Who is actually, I think he, was it nephew of Larry's, or?
Yeah, my husband's brother's...
And we've contacted him, he's interested in doing, we had a meeting, we talked about it, so, yeah, we'd like to appoint him.
And that's his background.
And he is a forester, that is his trade.
Okay, perfect, that's what they're looking for. So, the reason I ask, because Fred was there, and he knew how long he'd worked on several boards, and I know that later in the year, we may be picking somebody.
Potential, potential.
So that's why I asked Fred to list that stuff, okay?
We should still recognize him in the town report.
Yeah, and by the way, they did recognize him with a plaque with those years of service on all of his...
I think it's been since nineteen eighty-five.
So the conservation, the town forest, all those different committees got together, sent an email, and they have a plaque in his name going to him with that stuff on it, so...
Oh, nice, yep.
Okay, we have a, I'm gonna continue on, thank you, Dave, we'll keep that in the, uh...
Yeah, just put that in the file.
Alright, we have a, um, overlook estates, uh, engineering report, and it essentially says, um, do the construction spend completed days generally compliance with construction plans is overdrive, remember, they have a hundred fifty dollar, uh, a hundred fifty bond with us.
Yeah.
And, uh, they were looking for a final bond reduction.
So for your information, you have accepted overlooked drive, and it's a class five road, um, the reduction or the amount of the bond that's there now, it's in the hands of the selectmen and the road agent, it's no longer planning, um, issue, but it's something that the road agent would keep in the board informed of, of what is still outstanding and whether...
They have a, Lamontang hasn't, builders hasn't formally asked for a reduction?
No, but they're getting ready to, yeah.
But there's, I, I think you alluded to some vegetation issues that you...
Yeah, by reading the engineering report, there was some vegetation that really hadn't come in, uh, there's some boundaries, I think, it still hadn't been set, and some very incidental things, but at this point, vegetation's not gonna come in.
Correct.
And there might be a couple other minor things like that, so there would probably, the recommendation probably would be to keep a portion of it, a small portion that has a...
Token to finish off the job.
Until that stuff comes up into some point next year.
But you'll come, you'll come in front of us when they...
Yeah, we'll have a meeting between all of us, Lamontang.
Yep.
What I would ask is, um, from your perspective.
Yeah.
Give us a, in other words, if, if the town is stuck fixing it, how much should we retain to fix it?
Yeah, between the engineer and myself, we can...
Come up with a figure for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I could take one out of the air, but that's not fair, I really have a real estimate.
No, we'll have something that's gonna be, but the work, everything they've done is acceptable, I mean, there's no I mean, there's no large outstanding things other than basically some grass going, some minor erosion issues and monuments. And there's one thing that we require is an ASB, ASB, which is a plan of what's exactly on the ground. My understanding is they're in the process of doing that. So probably they're gonna get as much of that stuff together as they can and then come in and ask for it.
Okay. No, I understand your concerns that we don't wanna be stuck with a problem, with an unfinished road.
Yeah, but none of this stuff is...
All right, next item, that was just, uh, we got a copy of the, uh, pour and a butter to the, uh, the property over here doing the, uh, um, coffee shop. That was on notification.
Room property.
I'm sorry?
Room property.
Room, yeah. And, um, okay, uh, we have the, um, the Department of Labor, we had a, uh, an audit. Uh, they came in just unannounced. They came in and they, uh, basically did an audit on a lean, saw a problem. They found one issue and we were offered paying, I'll leave the employee a name, but we failed to pay an employee...
Seventeen dollars in full offense.
And so slap our hands, Dunbarne.
So basically what that was is the employee was filling out the time sheet and in minutes. And then reporting hours in the totals column to the rounded. And, um, it's actually acceptable, but when you're recording the true minutes of in and out, if you're going to report that type of ending balance, then the rounding method is allowable, but you would either want to...
Round up.
Round up or round down depending on where that time came in, in that fifteen minute period. And, um, she gave me the RSA and said it's, it's very acceptable for people to do that. So I feel like that would be, um, an important tool to pass on to the staff that, uh, we will follow that guideline and use the rounding method for reporting time on the time sheet so that doesn't happen again.
Okay, and you'll implement that?
Yes.
Does it have to go to all the departments?
Yep, I will, I will, yep.
And, okay, just to let you know, because we were hand-staffed for seventeen dollars, they're gonna nail us for a hundred dollar fine.
I think it actually encompassed the, um, the pressure tanks too, the combined things. So these are things that we've learned. We didn't realize we had to have our inspections of our, um, pressure tanks. We found that we had two, one in highway, one in, um, fire department. And then we actually have one downstairs in our basement for water, um, pressure for the heating system.
I don't think, uh, we have a, we have an option to formally dispute this. I think for that small amount and thing is, uh, I think that it was more constructive criticism. Thank you. And so I think we have consensus to make.
It's worth your while. You're not gonna win.
No.
All right, so I will process that.
But there's one thing too, is when you're talking with someone.
Yep.
There's no such thing, the person you're talking about is saying, they made, uh, references that sometimes they come in early or whatever.
Right.
Is this, when you're talking to them, there's no such thing as off the record.
Right.
Everything's on the record.
On the record, absolutely, yep.
Okay, continuing on, I have my next couple weeks, I got a structure replacements script. This is for EverSource, is doing some information, do some work, it looks like.
Yeah, though, they, the email basically says that they'll be replacing structures in Bow in the town of Dunbarne beginning in November and going through the spring of two thousand nineteen.
They're actually doing it right now. Better sign this, get it back.
All right. All right, I got a request. This, this is an interesting one. Um, and, uh, this is a request from the Dunbarne Congregational Church. Uh, they have in their concert and they have limited washroom facilities. They wanna use a town hall restrooms during the concert. You know, you know, I wanna be the nice person, but remember, when Dunbarne nots on the common, we closed out facilities and we closed out facilities for Old Home Day and, uh... So I need some input from my fellow selectmen on this one.
Well, you had them open for one event and we had problems with the bathroom.
Right.
Yeah, the handle broke.
So then we decided we weren't, and it's kinda tough to make an exception.
For one.
For one. Uh, you know, I know it may be a good thing and, and probably gonna ruffle some feathers, but, uh, you have to apply that universally, you know.
I think it'd be unfair if we did one for one and we have to be consistent.
I think that, uh, there was another church event that was going on that we were working with a gentleman who was using, I don't know, was it for the...
For the cut, number?
Restoration?
Yeah, it was, uh...
But they weren't using any of the bathroom facilities?
That is correct.
So we've actually, it's been three groups that we've said, no, no more.
So, Dave, do you have any comment on that?
Um, no, I guess we should stay the course. I think that, you know, one thing about that on the common, there were a lot of non-residents coming in and out the building and, uh, I think that this may be more residents, but then again, we don't really know. So I, I guess we stay the course.
Okay.
Okay, so I have to know.
Separation church and state. Go ahead, Leo.
Well, I think you, uh, did the same thing for, uh, Old Home Day, didn't you?
Yeah, we...
Those are all residents, basically.
That, yeah, you're absolutely correct. And, uh, I, I don't think it's fair to say no for the one group in yesterday. We have to be consistent.
If you have a policy, you have to follow your own policy.
Amen. Agreed. And I think it's unfortunate, but the thing is, um, that's the way it's gonna be.
Nobody says they're bad people or they're gonna break anything. That's not the point.
Okay, so rather than bring these requests to you now that the policy's been clarified, I'll just brush it in the future the same way? And then if they have any concerns, they can come.
Okay, uh, Lean, uh, I just, we got some, uh, con, uh, some quotes coming in. We don't have them all yet for the, uh, the bathroom renovations at the, uh...
That's still work in progress. We've received one and we have samples.
You signed that one.
And a, and a roof repair meeting on the second one, and the third one hasn't returned its call yet.
Okay. And, uh...
Is that going forward?
Yes, that's all, Lean's part.
Going forward, okay. I feel we're following, giving her everything.
Well, this, my, my, it's been a little big, I won't take it on that one. All right, um...
I saw that one.
The safety center. Lean's got a quote. It's quite high, but the thing is, it's quite extravagant as far as what they're doing to fix that leak problem. But the, I saw the amount of money and if she, Lean gave us a prenup, we have left. And gentlemen, we don't have enough money to do the roof repair with that quote. So the question is, um, we have, Dave, we have about sixteen K left in our budget. We have nothing to do with siding, but nothing with roof. That may have to wait till next spring and we have to work, muck our way through the winter with that, or...
How much was, uh, how much was Woody's first proposal on, on the bathroom?
The bathroom?
About twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, it's only two billion.
So we have enough to do both at the same time?
The bathroom and...
But don't forget... We have to make sure we have enough to do Woody's to...
And also the, uh, safety center, we have enough to do, now, including Woody's bathroom, we have to do the other side of the safety center.
Yep.
So we can do two little projects and defer that one. But, you know, the roof leak I'm kinda concerned with is that it also fixes the antenna and all that kind of stuff they were talking, they wanna get that fixed.
I realize that. Has, um, has John been involved with this at all? Did he get a copy yet?
No, not yet.
So let's get John a copy, get his insight on it.
Okay.
And, um, and meanwhile, we'll try and get a second vendor if we could, because it was all...
I've been trying like for three, four months. A lot of them will, our response is that they don't, they do flat rubber roofs, they don't do metal roofs and, um... Or they're not, they're concerned about the, the fact that the, there's no insulation and it will cause, um, problems with, uh, melting and, and that's primarily why there's...
One of the questions I would have of John, can he, can he survive to spring?
Okay.
Would you agree with that? Because that would be a high priority for the spring.
Yeah, well, actually, because then we can look at the maintenance budget, you know.
Have that added right in there. Now, the, uh...
What happened to the twenty-eight?
Lean, Lean, uh, Lean had to ask another question and they added something to the bid.
Yeah, so they added the roof break, you know, all across the entire roof. You know how we're getting complaints and I explained that we're installing new siding and the snow is coming off in sheets and hitting the vinyl? And he said what they, he would propose instead of just the cricket that was, that we were trying to get in front of that antenna to run a break, what, what is it called? I don't have a copy of that in front of me.
It's, uh...
It's called, uh, this one right here. Um, wondering how, uh, let's see. Five S color guard, snow retention to entire eve. So he's recommending you run it across the whole length of both sides of the new roof system.
You're talking about the snow guards?
Right, so it gets...
Snow doesn't slide off the roof.
Right, so it breaks it up in, rather than coming off in sheets.
Yes, did you hear John said we can't do that? Can't have the snow on the roof structurally.
There's a, there's an issue with that.
So you're saying the snow guards would keep the snow on the roof, it would not break it up?
They keep it on, but melt like a traditional roof instead of sliding off.
And there's a weight problem potentially.
We can't do that.
Okay, then that won't work, then.
Bring this back down to twenty-eight.
Still doesn't... All right, this one, yeah, sure.
You're talking about the antenna and a cricket. Is the cricket have to be because of the antenna?
Yeah.
Is the antenna the root of some of this problem?
Not the leaking area, no.
I was gonna say, maybe we could have put the antenna on it.
The antenna causes the leak in the window.
Post off the roof might be an idea.
A gable end or something.
I'm just saying.
Right.
I, I guess what you're saying, relocate, relocate the antenna.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that might be help eliminate future problems.
If you put on the gable end, you don't have ice problems.
Or even a remote post or something.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't know anything about it.
There's a reason the antenna's in that location. I think John explained it to us earlier.
Okay, yeah, they might. I just, I know nothing about it. Okay, that's, it's an interesting thought. I think worth asking the question again.
Yeah.
All right, back to the front board.
Well, well, it's work in progress, but the thing is, we do have money. Remember the, uh, remaining amount of money here? We have about...
It's on that front page, Mike.
Yeah, but the thing is, and this is for the other, the siding, so...
Oh, you wanna, you guys wanna vote on that now? Is that what you wanna do?
Do you wanna, just got the siding, uh, encumbered or do you wanna, we can...
Yeah, we can encumber the money if we, you know, I think you have it in the budget.
And it'll allow enough to encumber money for the bathroom renovation.
Let me, let me read and make a motion on it so we can encumber it.
So basically, this is not the time to install siding, so if they hold their price and they encumber...
Uh, they could do it, they could do it, you know.
Oh, you can?
Oh, yeah.
Cold focus, okay?
Of course.
I know they did a great job.
And they were gonna do it in December originally, I remember. Gene doesn't like this dance school.
Did you wanna look at that cone thing that...
I'm gonna ask you a question here. We just did, uh, we just gave them a check for...
Seventy-three hundred, is that what it says right there?
Yep, so we had sixty-four plus the eight fifty, is that...
Yep, yep, that's what we approved.
Yes. And that came out even, yep, okay.
Now, Woody mentioned to us, Bob, that...
There's two holes sort of drilled in the JB.
And I don't know what that means, if the...
The JB where the siding goes into?
Yeah.
Uh, there's two holes and he said, you know, plastic deteriorates. Well, he noticed it, I think by the door or...
Yeah, he said it's by the entrance of the door.
It's a JB by the door.
Would these guys have drilled it?
I don't know. So I guess we're, I'd have to...
I'm sure they'd have to, they'd put a new piece on if they have to.
Yeah.
So we'll just ask them.
I, I will say though, that you do cut the JB that the bottom, you're going around the windows and stuff.
Sure.
You know, so you can go around, so...
Okay, so I actually want this page here with these two totals, not that page. That was for the other type of siding.
Correct, yep.
So, okay, we're sorry.
So I'll make a motion. Let me add these two. Get them on my phone, we'll just do it. What's the number, is Mike sixty?
Fifty, fifty-two, sixty.
We have forty-five, sixty.
Seven, I'm...
Fifty-two, sixty. Yeah, fifty-two, sixty. I'll make a motion, um, to accept the bid to install new mastic barkwood vinyl siding double four on the east side of the fire and police station from JMR siding. For his bid. And that would include removal of the existing siding and disposing it at the town dump.
I'll second the motion.
Just a, a little bit of discussion. I just wanna make sure that, um, remember that's the part that was bowled out? And so just make sure the contractor knows that, um, we need, he needs to inspect that bowled out area. We know from the inside it's all right, but we don't know what the outside looks like. Yep. All in favor of the proposal?
Aye.
Aye, and Lean, I'd like to, uh, make sure that if he can't do it by the remainder of the year, we encumber that.
Okay.
So it's part of our budget.
Okay, um, just I have some, just, we're gonna be accepting a grant on behalf of the police department. That's next meeting. Just to be aware of that. We're not gonna do it tonight. It looks like we have one of our residents gonna donate money for some communication devices for the, for the police department.
Oh, yeah, they did talk about it.
Yep. This is a, we've, what was the last proposal's in inbox? It was, we made it up last week, suspended from, uh, solar information passed on to John Stevens. I have a variety of subjects to talk about, the transfer station, some will be done in non-public because it's a hiring action. But there's a couple more that we can talk about right now. This is just an FYI of a meeting coming up with Primex, concerning one of our employees. Uh, this is a request for overtime. Bob, do you have an opinion on that one? Can you talk to me about that?
Okay, this is, uh, that's one more.
Okay, so he sent the board an email earlier in the week saying that it's possible that he was gonna be coming, incurring some overtime. So, um, I sent him a text this, earlier today and asked him how his hours were looking for the remainder of the week. Because typically he has Fridays off and then he works Saturdays. Is, he responded, he, he thinks it's gonna be in the three to four hour range if he works a full day on Saturday. And then I, uh, asked him what the staff looked like besides him working on Saturday. So we have Woody, two other people, and then Roger Rice covering lunches. So, um, that's assuming he works a, a ten hour day. He's supposed to be working three, four ten hour days, so, um, I can just, at this time, ask him to leave early, go late. Or if you wanna approve what, we, we don't know the number of hours are going, going to be there, potentially three to four hours of overtime.
Any consensus on overtime? You know, um, I approved it when Lean was out, uh, Woody came to me as the next in chain command and he asked for overtime for last week. I approved, uh, the appropriate overtime figuring that he was short-staffed and it was, uh, it was a tough week, uh, Thanksgiving week.
Right, and I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that there were two holidays in that week.
Correct.
So that's a standard sixteen hour work week, sixteen hour shifts that were not physically worked but paid for. So that put his other hours into the overtime for, for...
And just like you, Mike, I don't have a big issue with this, only for the fact that, you know, we know he is short-staffed down there. He doesn't have one staff member that's been working a significant amount of hours that at some point, he's saying in this letter here to us that it could become, you know, dangerous if they work much more hours than they have been working, so... I don't know. Is, he's saying, you know, that he's gonna watch it and keep as close to forty hours as he can. I think if he goes over a few hours, I don't think it's a big deal.
My thing is, uh, I, I think for the one last week, it may be permissible because, uh, I think we have two new candidates we're gonna be looking at. That may be the, so long-term solution, short-term solution.
But the communication sort of in between himself and the town administrator, whether or not he should work the overtime. He should justify to her why he needs to work the overtime.
I'd tell you to.
Rather than reading a generic, you have no idea what he's gonna do in that time.
What do you mean?
Why, why, why it's so important that's gonna be done this week, can't be done on Monday? That's the example.
You know, I'll use that one because he can always do the following week if it's only two or two hours or three hours. But more importantly is the communication should not be that he's gonna go over, but that he's communicated and he was given permission to work overtime.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you did say he called you or talked to you, didn't he?
No, I had to, with that generic email, I had to ask him more information for more questions.
Why you call it generic email though?
Well, it's, it's kind of vague. It's not saying...
I don't know, I just took that as he was giving us all a heads up. I don't know. I didn't take it, I didn't take it negatively, I guess.
No, 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 but it's always good to know. I mean, if, if he had four people on staff and he said, I'm gonna be the fifth person, I might say, leave early or come, or go in late versus, you know, if I have one person and I needed there, then I'd say definitely work.
And just to be the devil's advocate here, uh, uh, we do have it on the standby people, the part-time, the real part-timers who are gonna be called out in emergency. Has he utilized that? I would ask them to make, call, have a shorter day for you, so you can call on some other people to augment. We had that list of people, and he's supposed to go down the list and call them.
I, I would say, why don't we just respond to that?
Oh, it's, it's Lean's, I think it's Lean's decision.
Okay, I just, um...
Remember, we had that list of those standby people which were...
I know what I was gonna do in response to that email, is respond back to, please try to limit your overtime as much as possible by using the standby people we have in place.
Yep.
Okay?
But you're at the end of the week anyhow, you know.
Yeah, this is... That's, yeah, that's.
Here we are, tomorrow's Friday, you know?
But by the time we get these people on, it could be.
But my point, my point is more that the communication should be a little more forthwith with the administrator. Rather than reading this in an email that he's gonna go over so he can give an explanation as to why he's going over and you're not left in the dark.
Okay, so you got a clear path to follow then?
Yeah.
Now, this is the other thing, um, there was a holiday, uh, this week, and, read that. And Lean, what, what is that? Just reaffirm the policy concerning, um, when you have a big, uh, holiday in the week.
Oh, you're receiving that email because I've sent out a memo to the different departments that if there's any outstanding leave, that they, they feel that they may not be able to, uh, use up by the end of the year. That they should be come before the board to discuss it and let them know that there's possibly some, um, annual leave or personal time that they won't be able to get to. It's still a little premature by my opinion. It's not quite December first yet, but, um, we have four weeks ahead.
When did we tell them to notify us?
It was in October.
No, but we told them by December.
December first, and you don't meet on December first. Today would be the last day to meet before the board, come before the board to talk about that. So he's looking for.
So he's asking us in a timely manner, then, right?
Right, so.
So you have no problem with the time that he's asking for?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I think with the staffing issues, I don't have a big problem with paying them. But like you said, if we want to wait to the end of the month, then I think.
It may have played out and, and with the new help, he may find that he has the time to take.
So if we, if you want, maybe we'll respond back, wait till the last week of the month or so, we'll do it?
Right, and recognizing that he's requested it.
I'd say we do acknowledge his request, but the thing is, uh, he may have the opportunity in the next four weeks to take it. Remember, I think you have to take it within two weeks of a, of a holiday, you know?
For.
For a holiday, for that.
Right, under, unless, unless circumstances and, and requests to take it a little bit later come up.
Right, so we may mitigate that right now, so we, we're giving them, uh, the four weeks to take it, really. What I'm saying is we're gonna be hiring hopefully two people tonight.
Yeah.
And that may mitigate, give them the opportunity to take off time.
Okay, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll look for.
Acknowledge his, his timely request, and then we'll.
It's time to study it.
Yeah, we can make a decision.
Later December.
In the near future.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, inbox is empty. Unbelievable. I'm gonna go, um, we had public comment already, last public comment, I'm gonna open it one more time just.
Good. I, I forgot about this before.
Okay.
We're gonna put a sign up at the library. Snow and ice or whatever's sliding.
Yeah, you had talked about that last year.
Yeah, and, yeah, man, I talked to Mary and again, and she just reminded me of the snow and everything. Um, I have a sign. Can I put it on the building or you want me to put it on a post?
Uh, what about the, uh, just the ramp?
Bolt it to the ramp? There's already one on the ramp.
He's talking this corner here, Mike.
As you face the building, the, the entrance door to the right-hand side, is, I guess, is substantial amount of snow that'll slide off that.
Can we put it on a post?
And it comes out into a.
Can we put it on a post?
We can. I was just being lazy. It's a farmer in me, you know? It's a farmer in me, just screw it to the building.
Hey, if you put a wind post, you can screw it to that.
I just didn't dare do it unless I asked you guys.
I, I need to tell you, we made them.
That's what I thought, eighty thousand dollar paint job. I didn't think you'd be proud of me.
Two years, two years down the road.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll put it on a post.